Test, test. Why don't we all plan on taking our seats? We'll be getting going here in a second or two.
Okay. Cause I've lost what you gave me.
Just make it up as you go.
Yeah. I think they control the mics. Either that or I'll have to use my outdoor voice.
Good evening, we'll be coming to order.
Full police force. Oh yeah.
I apologize for not having a functioning clock up there on the wall, but my cellphone tells me that it's about seven o'clock, so it's time. Wow, that's their problem for coming late. We're starting at seven o'clock.
You got two minutes.
Yeah.
Not according to my clock.
Mine says one more minute.
I'll give them a few seconds to settle in.
Everyone wants to get on the bad side of the moderator. And I guess.
Cause remember, he still has the weapons.
Yeah, just switch to seven. This one doesn't change as fast as the other.
Good evening, welcome to annual town meeting. A couple of housekeeping duties. As you're aware, we have a very large agenda ahead of us tonight, so I would hope that everyone will be concise in their comments and unfailingly polite to one another. I've appointed two tellers to assist in counting votes this evening, as we will have several ballot measures or warrant measures that will require two-thirds vote, and it's a lot easier to actually count than for me to try to figure it out visually. I believe that microphones will be available scattered through the room. I would appreciate it that you use them. We are being televised. I would ask you to identify yourself the first time you speak, so that those of us who aren't acquainted with everyone can get acquainted with everyone, and it'll also help the folks at home to keep track of what's going on. So, without further ado.
Okay. Start with our annual town meeting.
Oh, excuse me, excuse me. I neglected to ask the clerk to read the return of the warrant. I was so anxious to get going.
Franklin SS, pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Whately by posting attested copies of the same at the Town Hall, Town Office Building, Post Office, and S.Y. Dickinson Library in said town, seven days at least before the date of the meeting as within directed. Edwin M. Zinyeski, Constable of Whately. It was posted on April 13th, 2018.
Thank you, Lynn. Now Fred.
Okay, Article One, I move that the town vote to accept the annual reports of the officers of the town and to hear any other reports of the boards and committees.
Second.
Is there any discussion regarding Article One? I would ask those in favor to indicate by raising their cards. And those that are opposed, the article is passed. I will also turn the floor back to Fred momentarily.
Okay, this, at this time, I'd like to dedicate this year's annual report to a longtime resident of Whately who has been involved in, in our community and our committees and support for our meetings and a lot of things that has been happening in town over the last 50 years. Her commitment has started way back in the 250th, 200th, pardon me, 200th anniversary celebration of Whately, and she's continued to be, play a vital role in a lot of committees, and it's a great pleasure to, for me to dedicate this year's annual report to Mrs. Jane Gribko.
Woo!
I'm very proud and I'm happy. I have been able to work with my daughter.
Mr. Moderator, that's a tough act to follow, but I will move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board to borrow money from time to time in anticipation of the revenue of the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018, in accordance with provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 4, entry new any note or notes as may be given for a period of less than one year in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44, Section 17.
Second.
Discussion on Article Two. Those in favor, please indicate by raising your cards. Opposed, measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the select board to enter into compensating balance agreements with banking institutions, having their principal offices in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2018, as permitted by General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53-F.
Can I hear a second?
I'm not hearing a second.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Those in favor? And those opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to apply for, accept and expend any federal, state, or private grant monies on behalf of the town and to authorize the town treasurer with approval of the select board to borrow in anticipation of reimbursements.
Second.
Those in favor? And those opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to establish spending limits for the town's revolving funds, as established by the town's general bylaws, Chapter 46, revolving funds, for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018, as follows, and I'll read it quickly because it's a short list. Dog licensing and control revolving fund 2,000, recreation revolving fund 20,000, library revolving fund 1,000, public hearing revolving fund 2,500, cordwood sales revolving fund 2,500, cemetery commissioners revolving fund 1,000, trench permit 1,000, recycling and solid waste revolving fund $15,000.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Fran.
How did you come to these limits?
They're, they're the same, they're the same as last year.
This is a recurring.
I'm sorry?
This is a recurring.
Yes, oh yes. Yeah, there's nothing new here.
Thank you. You're good with that? Alrighty. Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising their card. And those opposed, passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the town's general bylaws, Chapter 46, revolving funds, Section 46-5, by expanding the program or activity expense payable from the Fund for Cordwood Sales Revolving Fund, as follows, and among those, the only new text is in italics, the, what already exists is in regular print, and the only thing that is changing is that we could purchase replacement trees and maintenance of trees on town property. That's the only change.
Did I hear a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? No? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaw adopted under Article 12 at the April 24th, 1990 annual town meeting by amending paragraph A as follows, deletion shown in strikeout, and new text in italics. Paragraph I reads, A reads, "The tax collector shall annually and may periodically furnish to each department, board, each department, board, commission, or division, hereafter referred to as the licensing authority, that issues licenses or permits including renewals and transfers, a list of any person, corporation, or business enterprise, hereinafter referred to as the party, that has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or any other municipal charges, striking out this section for not less than a 12-month period, and that such party has not filed in a good faith, a pending application for an abatement of such tax or a pending petition before the appellate tax board."
Questions or discussion? Yes.
Neil Abram. The notes about this warrant suggest that this could lead to denial of a permit. The warrant doesn't say anything about denial, just that names will be published. Is there an automatic denial or permission to deny that is granted somewhere else?
The present bylaw, this is not the complete bylaw, and that is the purpose of the bylaw, is to deny permits for those people who don't pay taxes. The only difference is that in the past, it's only been taxes that over, are over a year in arrears. This would make it so that any delinquent tax, we could withhold a permit.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to fix the salaries or compensation of the elected officers of the town for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2013, 2018, as follows, and I won't read the entire chart, but we'll give people 15 seconds to take a look at these, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask.
And I'll second it while people are reading.
Yes.
Is it a fair assumption that these numbers do represent a 2.25% increase over last fiscal year?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion?
Yeah, I just got a question about the town clerk. $22,000 increase?
No, that's the total. The increase was 2.25% above what it was last year.
Okay, and all these other numbers are the totals?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed? Measure passes.
Move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $167,945 from the Water Department Enterprise Fund to finance the operation of the water department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. And the numbers are listed below, I won't bore you by reading them all.
Are there any questions for the water commissioners? In that case, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor? And those opposed? I believe Mr. Antea has a presentation to share with you regarding our budget for this upcoming fiscal year.
I do. Good evening. On behalf of the Whately Finance Committee, we'd just like to give you a brief overview, some of the highlights of what you will be voting on shortly. First of all, this year's budget process involved everybody on this screen. It was, communication was great between the select board, the finance committee, and we'd really like to thank Brian for putting this all together and sort of herding the cats, if you will, into this, into this meeting today. First of all, you'll be looking at town government, and as you can see, we have a five-year window view here as to the escalation in costs, whether it's general government, cultural recreation, just a little bit, public health has popped somewhat, public safety has held pretty tight, and hats off to Keith and the guys, cause they've really kept the lid on the public works and still been, been able to do a good job. But as you can see, again, in fiscal year 19, insurance and benefits, which we have very little control over, demands more and more of our tax dollar. Our schools, as you can well, as you can well imagine, also take a good amount of our tax, taxation. And in 2019, whether it be Franklin Tech, Frontier Regional High School, or Whately, 2019 comes on top, but as you can see, the high school's done a pretty darn good job of keeping things level, whereas the Whately Elementary School continues to head north in cost, and I would, I, I would ask that you speak to your schools, school board members to, to have a discussion about this. Our tax rate, one thing that the, that the finance committee, as well as the select board, is, is heading towards is looking at that tax rate each and every year, and as you can see for the past five years, stability has been probably the mainstay here. And if you look from fiscal year 18 up to our estimate for fiscal year 19, we're only looking right now at about a 15 cent increase. Whereas, if you look at family home values in Whately, for the first time in 2018, we've broken the $300,000 mark for the average home in town. So that's significant. But the financial position overall, I think we have to come to grips with the fact that we're over $5 million to run this town in 2019. Of that $5 million, we will be, we will have over $300,000 spent on capital project, the majority of that being building upgrades. And following the town meeting, and should this all pass, our stabilization will be little over half a million dollars in free cash, will be just north of a quarter of a million dollars, which puts our financial position in a very stable spot. And as we said before, this year, with all said and done, all this expense, our tax rate should be $15.49. And I think if you compare that to other towns, there would be some happy campers out there if they had this.
Thanks, Paul. Would you like to actually move your article?
Yep. Thank you, Jim. I move that the town vote to act on the report of the finance committee on the fiscal year 2019 town operating budget, and to raise and appropriate and/or transfer from available funds, money for the operation of the town's departments, boards, committees, agencies, and offices, for the payment of debt, service, and for all other necessary and proper expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, as follows. Note, water department enterprise fund costs are appropriated in Article 9. Proposed fiscal year 2019 budget. The finance committee recommends that the amounts shown in the column caption FY19 budget, finance committee recommended, be raised or appropriated or transferred from available funds for fiscal year 19, operating purposes, debt services, and other town expenses.
Second.
Questions or discussing, discussion regarding the proposed budget?
I've got one, Richard. Paul, just for clarification for people in the, in the audience, the stabilization number you talked about, is that all stabilizations combined, or is that just the regular stabilization?
That's all stabilization combined.
Okay, great, thank you.
Of which there are how many?
There's at least two.
There's more than that.
Yeah.
There's capital, there's, what's that?
Two big ones.
Two big ones, and then there's a couple of the small ones, yeah.
Yes, so question, right now, we're just voting on the-
Would you, would you mind identifying yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry. Branch hike is 25 Gray Oak Lane.
Thank you.
Clarification question, because I did read there was, and maybe this is an article coming up, of transfer of free cash to affect our tax rate. You indicated that the tax rate will go up by 15 cents.
Right. That's estimated.
Estimated, understood. And I guess my question is, how was the, if we're transferring free cash to affect our tax rate, how did you arrive at an increase of 15 cents?
The, well, because we decided not to use all the free cash to push over onto the tax rate. And based on what we have to spend, and based on what we are bringing in, leaves us with a position that forces us to create a tax rate. And that's, it's, it's kind of, kind of a math problem, and that's what you get. Had we taken more free cash and put it over, yeah, we probably could have reduced the tax a little bit, but, you know, when you consider 15 cents a thousand as an increase, and it's, and that's not written in stone, it could be less, depending on what the governor's budget is and what the final, final numbers from the state are, but, you know, that's how we got there.
Could I just add, add to that, Paul? This is, this is just an estimate, it won't be finalized till the fall of this year, and that would occur after, after July 1. See, the town is, has to submit data on assessments and tax collections that are due to the town on July, up till July 1, and that information is considered in the final tax rate that's established in the fall. So we're still, assessors are still in the process of evaluating properties and assessing new growth and things like that. We have some new, as you're aware, new construction going on, so that will enter into the tax rate, and we have until July 1 to enter that information. So then after that, the final will be decided, and I, I guess the $200,000 is kind of a placeholder now, that could change later on if we decide to do it.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor of the budget as proposed? And those opposed? Budget passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $65,000 from available funds, fiscal year 17 free cash, to the vehicle stabilization fund.
Second.
Questions or discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $61,000 from the ambulance stabilization fund to the vehicle stabilization fund.
Second.
This will require a two-thirds vote, so if it's not apparent to me visually, I will ask the tellers to give me a head count. Those in favor? And those opposed? Apparently unanimous, I guess that would count as two-thirds. Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $140,000 from the MEMA, Emergency Mill River Bank Stabilization Account into the stabilization fund.
Second.
Questions, discussion? Those in favor? And opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Assessors to transfer the sum of $200,000 from available funds, fiscal year 17 free cash, to reduce the tax levy for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018.
Second.
Are there any other questions about this? Those in favor? And opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $7,000 from available funds, parentheses, fiscal 17 free cash, to pay for the purchase of a new plow for the Ford F-550 truck to be used by the highway department.
Second.
All those in favor? And those opposed? The article passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $12,700 from available funds, fiscal year 17 free cash, to pay for the purchase of a new lawnmower with collection system to be used by the highway department.
Second.
Questions, discussion? All those in favor? And those opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $25,000 from available funds, fiscal year 17 free cash, to pay for the replacement of the highway garage roof.
Second.
Discussion or questions? All those in favor? And opposed? Thank you, passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $45,000 from available funds, parentheses, vehicle stabilization fund, to pay for the purchase of a new police cruiser to be used by the police department.
Oh, second.
Is there discussion or questions? This will require a two-thirds vote also. Those in favor? And opposed? In the judgment of the moderator, we have two-thirds, and it passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $40,000 from available funds, vehicle stabilization fund specifically, to pay for the purchase of a four-wheel drive rescue and transport vehicle to be used by the fire department.
Second.
Question or discussion? This also will require two-thirds, all those in favor? Those opposed? In the judgment of the moderator, we have two-thirds. Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of $6,000 from available funds, fiscal year 17 free cash, to pay for the purchase and installation of a monitored fire detection system at the fire station.
Question, discussion? And please introduce yourself.
Did we not have?
Name, rank, and serial number?
Nat Fortune, 152 Westbrook Road. Is this a replacement, or did we not have smoke detectors at the fire station before?
Where is our erstwhile fire chief or captain?
He's, he's not here tonight.
Lieutenant? Officer? Officer?
To answer your question, there is, this will be to put a monitored system in so that if something happens in the middle of the night, there's no one there, it'll go into like an ADT alarm system so that we're notified that the building's on fire or has some type of problem.
Thanks, Captain. Any other discussion or further questions? All those in favor? And those opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $45,000 from available funds parentheses fiscal year 17 free cash to pay for repairs to the sprinkler system at the Whately Elementary School.
Second.
Question, discussion? All those in favor? And opposed? Article passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $102,000 from available funds as follows. $16,074.47 from the sale of land received reserve for appropriation account, and $85,925.53 from fiscal year 17 free cash to be expended for the rehabilitation of the town hall. Such work to be done under the direction of the Select Board and to comply with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Yes.
I seem to recall, Don Skrowski, Christian Lane, seem to recall last year that Mr. Owoski stood up here before this body and said that the town hall wouldn't cost us any additional funding. And this year we're getting back here for $102,000, I'd like to know why.
Okay, I think the comments should have been, no additional funding and no additional borrowing that would affect the tax rate is really what the comment should have been interpreted or made last year. I won't argue if I made it, but that was my intent, that we were not going to borrow beyond the funding we had set up for rehabilitating the town hall. Now, what has happened since then, and it was in our package to fund the town hall, was to seek grant funds from the state, various organizations, offices at the state. We applied for four different grants, and we received two grants out of the four. The remaining money was made up by CPA money, so we're thankful that CPA is supporting the project. And what we also, once we awarded the project, we realized that we needed additional money to finish the project because the way it was advertised, it was in the building itself and the parking lot and the septic system as three components. We applied for another grant for ADA improvements to the building that would have been over $200,000. We applied for that in December, and we're hoping and waiting anxiously until sometime in January where we heard that we did not get any of that money. That would have covered all that we wanted to do for the town hall, for the project, to complete everything that was proposed, other than the additional sewer work, but at least the building itself and the front parking lot. So without that money, we've been trying to limit what extras, overruns, looking at cost savings stuff for the project. Our architect told us there was going to be a certain overrun, it's typical of any project, you don't know everything on a project until once you get started. We had some overruns, we had some underruns, and a decision now is coming to complete the project. This year, the project is on schedule, there's roughly two months left, May and June, contractor assured us it will all be done by the end of June, and we're asking for the $102,000 now to complete it. That's our goal, to complete project by this June. If we don't get that money, well, then there's some items that won't be done. Well, the things that won't be done is the front parking lot, the sidewalk in front of the building, drainage improvements to the lot. Basically, that's the improvements that will not be done.
Other questions?
Some of this money is needed for handicapped access ramp in the front of the building. There is a handicap access in the back with a stair tower where there would be a handicapped lift, but the building inspector has mandated there would also be handicapped access to all exits, entrances in a building, so we have to put a ramp in the front. So some of this money is needed to build that ramp in the front of the building and to connect it with a sidewalk that's going behind the building or between a post office. So some of that work is necessary regardless of whether we do anything with the parking lot or the sidewalk in front of the building.
Thank you, Fred. Yes.
So Sheila Zawinski, Christian Lane. So that was not something new, though, is that right? We knew all along that it had to be ADA compliant, so it's something that we're going to leave off even though it's pretty critical?
Well, it was our plan to do that with the driveway improvements, and we bid it that way because we wanted some flexibility in how we awarded contracts. If the contracts come in higher than bid, higher than advertised, which did happen, we did not have enough money to authorize a contractor to do the parking lot in the front. So the sidewalk, the ramp, handicap ramp for the front entrance was part of that parking lot proposal. That was in there because it made sense to the, to our architect recommended it be that way, and it made sense to the contractor to do that while he was doing sidewalk in front of the work, in front of the building, and also excavation in front of the building.
Don, follow-up question?
So in other words, Fred, if this project doesn't move forward with this money, the ADA accessible handicap wouldn't be put in, and I assume that the building inspector wouldn't allow occupancy?
Yes, that is correct.
And that's the way you bid that out?
That's not true.
Shame on you guys. And I have another question. I see later in the warrant, Article 34 calls for an additional $93,000 for the town hall, or some monies for the town hall, $93,000. Can you explain that, I think since we're on town hall?
I think I would prefer that we defer debate on later articles until they're actually proposed, until they're proposed and segmented, they're not germane to this discussion. Any other issues or questions? Actually, I've granted the floor to this gentleman.
Just a quick question, could you please remind us the intended use for the town hall once the project is complete and how the town's decision tonight on this article might affect when and whether we could use the town hall for that intended purpose?
Well, the answer to your second part is, I guess the decision on this funding won't really affect the use, what was proposed for it, I mean, may be delayed because we won't have occupancy of it, but the use can still continue, I guess, regardless of whether we do any improvements to the parking lot and the sidewalk in front. The use of the building, the historical society is going to be occupying the half of the first floor, half of the ground floor. Currently, they're in the old center school, the center of town, and it did not make economic sense and safety and other reasons to leave them there while we rehabilitated the town hall. And a decision was made by this board that the Whately Historical Society would occupy space on the first floor, so they will be there, that would be their permanent home. They're planning on moving there, then we'll decide later what to do with the school, but they will own that portion of the building, the first floor, a fourth of that, what's remaining will be restrooms, bathrooms, ADA compliant bathrooms, and in a small meeting room in the back. Upstairs is going to be the big meeting room, like we've always had, and I guess I'm hopeful that this meeting can be there next year, and we can go back to our town hall to have annual meetings like we've had years ago. So it's envisioned to be a community center for not only a historic society but for other civic uses in town. It's the biggest meeting area we will have outside of this building here, of the school, so that, and it's more conducive to smaller groups, maybe to, the acoustics are being improved in the building, so for music and sound, it will be better than a large auditorium like this. We have not, the Slug Board has not decided yet on specific uses. We have no use policy today. There was a proposal made that supported the renovation of it, and that's what our goal was, to rehabilitate it for them kind of uses, but we have no use policy yet. We will develop that to say what groups, kinds of organizations, hours they will use it, whether there's a fee for it or whatever, we still have to develop that.
Thank you, Fred. Any other questions? Donald? Oh, I'm sorry, I lost track of you entirely. You're next.
Press the button. Presently, the parking lot is functionally obsolete. It's not quite big enough to adequately allow the maximum usage for parking, and one of the proposals, or one of the things that would happen with this is that the parking lot would be expanded to allow better use of parking in there. Also, the slope, if you pull up in front of the post office, especially if you're a handicap, the handicap spot is not compliant, it's too steep. Anybody that tries opening their door, even elderly people have a very difficult time to get out of their vehicles because you're having to push the door uphill because your vehicle's headed uphill. So the parking lot definitely needs to have major improvements to make it, bring it up to standards, and there's also drainage issues going on in there that just need to be done, so this will help tie it all together to complete it.
Thank you, Keith. Mr. Sluter?
Don Sluter, Haydenville Road. The original cost of this was $102,000, estimated, came in at $1,404,000, and we're looking at adding $102,000. That's only like a 7% increase, so that's something that we should keep in mind when we're thinking about if we want to spend this money.
Mr. Zawinski.
Excuse me, Joe Zawinski, Finance Committee member, Christian Lane, a couple of comments about this. Fred mentioned that we would not, tried to clarify his statement before, saying that we would not be incurring any additional borrowing. I would say to that comment, if we didn't have $85,000 in free cash to offset this, then we would be borrowing. That's, I guess, a fact if we were going to fund this $102,000. So I think that's a misnomer to say that, you know, we weren't going to be doing, he was misquoted in saying that. The second thing is, Don, to your comment about this 7% increase, how much was our contingency, our overage contingency on this, you're stating a 7%, but why are we in this boat right now where all these things that need to be done, ADA compliancy with ramps, we have a parking lot that is inadequate, that is not ADA compliant, all these things that are not compliant, but they were going to look at as add-ons? My feeling about this from the beginning is that this whole thing has been mismanaged. We just keep on coming back asking for more money. Now, I agree, these things need to be done, but where does it stop? Where does it stop? And let's finish this project. I agree, let's finish the darn project, but why is it all the time that we are not on top of these things? We keep on looking for another way to fund them, and I will say, if we did not have free cash, we would be up against it.
Thank you. Let me respond to that.
Yeah, I've got a good response for that, too.
This is the first time we're asking the town for additional money. Last year, we put together a funding package, and I'll reiterate, we, our goal was to apply for grants to help so taxpayers wouldn't have to fund it. We did a lot of work to apply for them grants. Again, I'll say, we didn't get them all, but we tried, and the only, and we had a little money left in contingencies after we awarded the contract, kind of against the better judgment of our architect. Our architect said, that's not enough money in contingencies, you need to have more. We did not come back to the town at that point. The Building Committee, Brian and myself, have been meeting with the contractor at least every two weeks, sometimes weekly, to go over changes, extras, cost savings. We've saved some money on the plumbing, the electrical work in the front of the building. Things that we did not know about when we advertised the project was the flooring. There was no access to the flooring underneath where the assessor's room was, all that had to be redone. There was no access to the support for the second floor where the bathroom was. Once the bathroom walls were taken down, we had to put new beams and columns up to support the second floor. We did not know that when we advertised the project. That was found after it started. That's typical of a remodeling project, you don't know everything until the project starts. Yes, we could have done that before, but we would have to hire somebody to investigate that work and put it in the contract. Yeah, we could have done that before, but it would have cost money to investigate that. Our architect did the best they could at the time, and we agreed to go with what they were proposing.
Last year this time, I was actually out there listening, and, Don, I completely get what you're saying, but I also remember, two, maybe three years ago around this time, we as a town decided to buy a building on Sandy Lane for $800,000. Brand-new building, it is not going to need another dime of investment, but did we not invest thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars at special town meetings following that to make that building actually habitable and functional for us? This is just the nature of the beast, and I think that the overruns are only something around 7% is actually really incredible, and that this project is not delayed by all the weather and all the other things that have happened along the way. This could have been, I think it's been a very well-managed project. I think it was not necessarily, we didn't necessarily have the contingency we wanted going in. I understand that, but I think the amount that we're asking for is very reasonable, and it is, as Don would point out, taxpayer money, but that happened, that happens every time we do something. And so I'd say, put it into a little bit of context that way, it's actually a very reasonable investment for us in our town.
Mr. Moderator, could I chime in here?
Why not?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Do any of us want to see these increases? Absolutely not. But we, as a town meeting last year, pretty much to the day, saw the plan on financing this building. Part of that plan were the grants, some we've received and some we haven't, and part of that financing plan was the contingency in case we did not realize those grants. And the vote was near unanimous to accept that funding plan, understanding the risk inherent in perhaps we would not get all of these grants. If town meeting had wanted to, it could... If Town Meeting had wanted to, it could have said, it's not worth the risk. But we voted the risk, and we allowed the project to go forward. Now that the risk is coming to fruition, we can't suddenly say, this is a big surprise. It's not a surprise. We knew the risks when we voted the plan. We knew that we might not get these grants. We haven't gotten some of them. And now we're going to the plan that the Finance Committee and the Select Board put together to make, excuse me, to make sure that this project could be completed in a timely fashion. It's unfortunate, but it's not a surprise. We all voted it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Joe? I'll give you a chance to rejoin. Go ahead.
Just quickly, you know, if you were selling this last year as these risks, Jonathan, I doubt that that would have passed nearly unanimously, okay? These risks that you talk about now, I think, are something maybe you discussed at some other meeting, but it wasn't, certainly wasn't in this meeting, about all these risks that you're talking about, okay? That did not, that did not happen. And as far as listening to the experts, Fred, if they told you that you were underfunded for a contingency, why aren't we listening to them? Because you felt maybe, maybe because the number was going to be too high and it might not pass? Okay? If, I'm not sure what number it is that we had for it, but your own words saying that the experts said that the contingencies were underfunded, but we went forward with it anyway.
Okay, the reason we went forward is because we were in the middle of applying for an ADA grant. And why ask for additional money when we thought we had a good chance for an additional, two-hundred thousand dollars? We had that chance, and we didn't get it. So why have a special meeting and ask for, ask for money when we didn't need it? We didn't want to ask taxpayers back in December for additional money. We were waiting, hoping for the grant to come through. It didn't come through.
You're spending money you didn't have.
All right, James, let's everybody just take a nice, deep breath for a moment. I'd like to hear from some folks who haven't had a chance to speak. Judy?
Judy Marklin, 106 North Street. I just wanted to remind people about the money we did get from outside sources. So the package before this request was one-point-four million. Of that, half came from the state and from private donations. Whately money, including Whately CPA revenue, is half of that one-point-four. So with this hundred thousand, you'd be getting a one-point-five-million-dollar building with only eight-hundred thousand from Whately. To me, that's an awfully good bargain.
Thank you. Bob?
Mr. Moderator, remove the question, please.
Those in favor of ending debate on this issue, please signify by raising your cards. Those opposed? We will now proceed to a vote. Those in favor? Tellers, I'd like a count on this, please. Those opposed? Do I make that to be four? Eighty-three in favor, four opposed. Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of eight-thousand dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash to pay for repairs to the HVAC system at the town offices.
Second.
Discussion, questions? Those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of three-thousand-five-hundred dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash to pay for repairs to the roof at the town offices.
Second.
Discussion or questions?
Cynthia. Cynthia Allen, Laurel Mountain Road. So is this the Wormers Building that we're repairing? The eight-hundred-thousand-dollar, we don't need to do anything to it, building?
I think that would be a yes.
Other questions or discussion?
Gary Stone, Haydenville Road. Is this just putting a Band-Aid on it, or is this fixing the roof for long-term?
Who's in charge of roofs over here?
Maybe Brian. I guess I'm the roofer by default. This is to address leaks, active leaks within the town offices.
Is that a metal roof? That's a metal roof, right?
What's that?
That's a metal roof, right?
Yes. So we are not replacing the whole roof, if that's the question. We are addressing spots where the metal has either, either has holes in it or is peeling up from the building.
Other questions or issues? All those in favor? Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of one-thousand-eight-hundred dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash to pay for the purchase and installation of a fence at the baseball field adjacent to the fire station.
Second.
Judy?
This looks like it would be eligible for CPA funding. I'm curious why it's being financed this way.
The payment of this, there are a number of ways we could have financed it. We could finance it through this, we could finance it through the revolving fund, and we could possibly finance it through CPA, though I'm not convinced that's the case. This is about public safety at a field that's more and more being used by little kids to take advantage of all of our assets. And we just felt that it was a good use of town dollars because of the public safety concept. So perhaps you're right, Judy, but I'm not convinced that it is.
Other questions or discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer the sum of five-thousand dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash to pay for the purchase and installation of new interior and exterior lights at the S. White Dickinson Memorial Library. Come on, can I have a second?
Second.
All right.
You should probably just leave the microphone.
Is it fair to assume that these are going to be energy-efficient lighting fixtures?
I was not on the fixture committee.
Yes.
Yes.
Other discussion or questions? All those in favor? And opposed? Measure passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of six-thousand dollars from available funds fiscal seventeen free cash to pay for the purchase of a new lawnmower to be used by the cemetery commissioners for mowing at the town-owned and maintained cemeteries.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of four-thousand-four dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash for the town's share of the cost to purchase a replacement tractor similar in size and features to a John Deere 1025R subcompact utility tractor for the Frontier Regional School District, and the total cost not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Discussion? I believe, Jonathan, that would be called a ten-twenty-five.
Oh, I apologize for that. My deficiency in the knowledge of...
All those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of twenty-thousand dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash to be expended for the Whately 250th Anniversary Celebration. Second.
Discussion? Questions? Yes.
Megan Murphy, Long Plain Road. Is this all the money we're hopefully going to need for this?
I can take that. What we're hoping to do, this is based on what other towns have done recently for their 250th or 300th anniversary. It's basically seed money. We have a lot of fundraising planned. It may be that at the end of this, we end up turning back some of the money, but we're asking for twenty-thousand dollars this year, next year, and the year after. And with, if it goes as it did fifty years ago, a good chunk of that will be returned to the town at the end. But we needed to pay for things in advance, like, oh, the parade committee. Where's John? Yeah, there's many things for the parade that you need to pay for in advance that we wouldn't have funding for yet.
Thank you. Other issues or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over Article 30.
Second. Oh, yeah.
Any discussion? Explanation. Just a quick explanation.
Sure. The reason this article is on here was, when the town changes health plan benefits and the town gets its health insurance through the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust, required to share twenty-five percent of the savings with subscribers. And what had happened is, I believe, two weeks ago, I believe, the Hampshire County Group Insurance Trust voted to rescind the changes that they had previously voted on last October. So there's no need to make the payment.
All those in favor of dismissing this article? Opposed? Moving right along.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of three-thousand dollars from available funds fiscal year seventeen free cash to the highway expenses, salaries, and wage account, number 422-5110-000, to pay for the accrued benefits of a departing town employee.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Measure passes.
Alan Sanderson, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town here enact pursuant to general law, Chapter 44B, on report of the Community Preservation Committee for the fiscal year 2019 Community Preservation Budget, and vote to appropriate or reserve from the Community Preservation Fund a sum of money in the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for community administrative expenses, community preservation projects, and other necessary and proper expenses in the fiscal year beginning on July 1st, 2018, including debt service for any approved community preservation projects, with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. And these are the appropriations. From fiscal year 19, estimated revenues for community administrative expenses, six thousand dollars. And then on our reserves, from FY19, estimated revenues for open space reserve, twelve thousand. From FY19, estimated revenues for affordable housing reserve, twelve thousand. And from FY19, estimated revenues for budget reserve, forty-seven thousand.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate and transfer the sum of thirty-thousand dollars as follows. Fifteen thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund Historic Resources Reserves, and fifteen thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund Unreserved Fund Balance for the restoration of historic grave markers at the town-owned and maintained cemeteries.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor? And those opposed? The article passes.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote pursuant to general law, Chapter 44B, to appropriate and transfer up to ninety-three thousand dollars as follows. Up to forty-three thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund FY19 Estimated Revenues, and up to fifty thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Fund Unreserved Fund Balance to pay the debt service for the town hall rehab project loan.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Passes.
All right, this is a long one. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court for special legislation to allow John Hannam, the town of Whately Fire Chief, notwithstanding the provisions of any general law, general or specific law, to the contrary, to serve in such position until the age of seventy or until the date of his retirement or non-appointment, whichever occurs first, provided that no deductions from the regular compensation of said John Hannam shall be made under general law, Chapter 32, subsequent to his reaching the age of sixty-five, in connection with his service to the town for retirement or pension purposes. And further provided that the General Court may make clerical and editorial changes of form only to the bill unless the Select Board approves amendments to the bill prior to enactment by the General Court. And to authorize the Select Board to approve such amendments, which shall be within the scope of the general public objectives of the petition.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor? Those opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept as a town public way Gray Oak Lane as laid out by the Select Board and as shown on a plan entitled Pine Plains Estates, Long Plain Road, Whately, Massachusetts, Street Acceptance Plan, Gray Oak Lane, Francis Way, and Eastwood Lane, prepared by JAWK Incorporated by Mott McDonald dated 11-14-2017, and filed with the town clerk. And to authorize the Select Board to take by eminent domain to purchase or otherwise acquire the fee or an easement to said roadway and related easements for drainage, utilities, and other purposes for public ways as used in the town.
Second.
Any discussion? Joe?
So are we saying they were taking private roads and turning them into public roads?
I don't think that's how they would choose to word it, but that's...
Are we taking care of the roads?
Yeah.
Are we taking care of them now?
No.
So what's the impact to the town?
Keith?
Good question.
Well, I could say the impact is going to be on increased road mileage for state Chapter 90 funding as a minimum. That's all based on public road mileage. If Keith knows other instances where it would help, but go ahead.
Exactly what Fred said. I mean, part of our bylaws that we have in town, this isn't the first time that this has come about. We've had other projects in town. Mitchkowski Circle is one just down the road where same thing happened. The developer built it, and after it was built, brought it to Town Meeting, and Town Meeting accepted it. It's the, it is... It's the, it is a normal procedure with subdivisions. If you go to, Whately doesn't have as many as some of the other towns around. You go to South Deerfield and you look up and down Sugarloaf Street, for instance, there's subdivisions all over Sugarloaf Street, where that's what happens. So to further explain what Fred said, that after we accept it, then that road mileage will be added to the amount of road miles that Whately has. And then that is used in the formula for how much money that the state pays us in what is called Chapter 90 money, which is money that we use to maintain our roads for paving and things of that nature.
Thank you. Yes.
Keith, can you give us a question? And those ones that are expected as far as asphalt thickness, grain?
So we're not, we're not going to get into a maintenance problem that these roads are built to code to our liking or your liking?
Correct. They, we have pretty stringent subdivision regulations which specu-, or specify how they are to be built. They've been, all through the design and the building process, have been monitored by engineers. And the engineers have to report to the planning board. And I don't know if anybody from the planning board wants to speak about it because they, they are the ones that oversee it through the development process.
Other questions or discussion? Don?
If anybody'd like to hear it, we have employed White Incorporated out of Pittsfield to do the inspection on this. And all the reports were very good. I think Keith also took a look at a lot of these things as they were going in.
Thank you. Other discussion or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept as a town public way Eastwood Lane as laid out by the Select Board and as shown on a plan entitled Pine Plains Estates, Long Plain Road, Whately, Massachusetts, Street Acceptance Plan, Gray Oak Lane, Francis Way, and Eastwood Lane, prepared for JAWK Incorporated by Mott McDonald dated 14 November 2017, and filed with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to take by eminent domain to purchase or otherwise acquire the fee or an easement in such roadway, in said roadway, and related easements for drainage, utilities, and other purposes for which public ways are used in the town.
Second.
Kind of a lot like the first article.
Very.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Third time is the charm. I move that the Town of Whately vote to accept town public way Francis Way as laid out by the Select Board and as shown in the same plan that Jonathan and Fred just mentioned, and filed with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to take by eminent domain to purchase or otherwise acquire the fee for an easement in said roadway and related easements for drainage, utilities, and other purposes for which public ways are used in the town.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passed.
Mr. Moderator, I vote to see if the town votes to transfer to the Select Board for the purposes of sale or other disposition the care, custody, and control of the property located at 219 Christian Lane, Lot Number One, Assessor's Parcel ID 21-0-30-1, and to authorize the Select Board to dispose such property on such terms as the Select Board in its discretion determined to be in the best interest of the town.
Second.
Discussion? Fred? Don?
Okay, I'll took it. Does that belong to us? I thought we sold that to Frontier or?
No, this is, this is lot, this is the, the school building, the school building is on Lot Two. We are, we own Lot One behind.
But the address is still Christian Lane even though it's to the north.
Right.
Never mind.
Any other questions or discussion? This will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? Those opposed? It's unanimous in the judgment of the moderator. That constitutes two-thirds.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept general law, Chapter 64 and Section 3, and impose a local sales tax upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town to anyone other than a marijuana establishment at a rate of 3% of the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer. Said excised tax to take effect on July 1st, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor can wave their wheat straws.
Another question over here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You had a question back there.
Yeah, Paul Newland Conway wrote.
Sorry, Paul, I didn't see you. I apologize.
That's okay. I'm just curious where the 3% comes from as opposed to 5%, 10%, 15%?
I think three is the highest you're allowed to do it by state law.
Good work. Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please? Opposed? Measure passes.
I think it goes to Don.
I move, Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws by deleting the existing 171-28.6 Registered Marijuana Dispensary and Off-Site Marijuana Dispensary, and replacing it with a new 171-28.6 Adult Use Recreational and Medical Marijuana Establishments as shown in Appendix A to this warrant and summarized below.
Yes, I heard that.
Yes, there is a second.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the proposed Section 171/28.6 C7, which now reads, quote, "Marijuana establishments shall have a minimum 50-foot setback from all property lines." Be amended to add the words, "Except marijuana retailers shall have a minimum 20-foot setback from rear side yard property lines in the commercial district."
Everyone follows what's going on? Let me explain. Basically, the planning board has proposed some bylaw changes relative to retail marijuana establishments and so forth in town. Due to the timing of their public input, there were some changes that resulted from that, so they are moving an amendment to the original article, which slightly alters the wording. Do you have that illustrated by any chance on your little thingy? There is a, an explanation, I believe, in the meeting package.
It doesn't go into detail what exactly is changed.
The explanation for this is that during the public hearing, a number of people felt that in our existing commercial zones, the setback is 20 feet for almost everything else. And we didn't feel that we wanted to put landowners and merchants in Whately at a disadvantage if we came to selling marijuana.
Okay. So basically, your amendment simply would make this be in conformity with the rest of our bylaws on setbacks.
In the commercial zone.
In the commercial.
The discussion of marijuana retailers does reference this setback. So it will be clear on that slide.
Okay. Any other discussion on the proposed amendment? A vote in favor of the amendment will change the wording to 20 feet. We require only a majority on an amendment. Those in favor? And opposed? The main motion has been amended. I will now invite any discussion on the main motion.
Okay.
Hang on just a second, Paul.
Is there a question?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. The summary of changes, we're going to flick through and show you what's going on. So we're going to adult and recreate.
Speak into the mic.
Opportunities for Whately farmers and commercials.
Don, Don, can you speak into the microphone a little more?
Sure, how's that?
That's perfect.
Sounds too loud to me. Okay, the goal is to create opportunities for Whately farmers and commercial enterprises while preserving the town's rural character as much as possible and providing protection for the neighborhood. The new marijuana law replaces the existing medical marijuana and requires a special permit and a site plan review to allow for neighborhood input on anything that we vote on. And the special permit has a five-year term and is renewable. So if we're not happy with the way things go, we can go listen to the special permit renewal and vote it out. So the general provisions, we're requiring a 500-foot setback for schools, parks, churches, and basically any place children would be congregating, which could be brought down to 300 feet with a ZBA waiver, and 50-foot setbacks from most lot lines. We're requiring water and energy efficiency and odor control. We're requiring night-use cameras so that we don't have to have bright lights around the facilities. Requiring building designs appropriate for Whately, resetting size limits on buildings in certain distance. Outdoor cultivation is going to be only allowed in ag rez 2. Ag rez 2 is any agricultural and residential area that's more than 400 feet from the edge of the road. In greenhouses, they're designed to limit impact on the arable land and subject to lot coverage requirements. They must incorporate water recapture, reuse. Need Water Department certification if they're in the town water. They must, if possible, generate 50% of energy use. They must screen light from abutters after darkness, and no conflict, concrete flooring will be allowed. Next. Buildings must be designed to resemble barns or other ag buildings in the agricultural district. We've got a 40,000 square foot limit on buildings in the agricultural district. 5,000 square feet in commercial, no size limit in other areas. Again, we're going to need Water Department certification if they're using public pot water, and they must generate 50% energy where feasible. Marijuana retailers, no sales between 7, 8 o'clock in the morning and 7. Wait a minute, we got that backwards.
7:00 P.M.
8:00 P.M. and 7:00 A.M. Oh, all right, overnight. ZBA may restrict this further. Limit of three retail establishments in town, and the side and rear setbacks are going to be 20 feet in the commercial district. Oh, yes, the indoor ag buildings. There are some buildings that will not fit some of the special permit conditions that are in existence now that could be used. In other words, some may be too close to the road, they may have not enough setback, but they're existing agricultural buildings. And we'd like to give those people and owners the right to use those ag buildings as marijuana growth. Siding for other retailers can only be in commercial, commercial, industrial, and industrial with a special permit. Processing and manufacture only in commercial, industrial, and industrial, and testing labs, same thing. That's it.
Thank you.
Who has questions for Don?
Apparently Paul does.
Apparently Mr. Newland has some.
Yes, I'm speaking only as a taxpayer who is interested in economic development. And I wonder how these bylaw changes compare to neighboring towns like Deerfield and whether they put us at a competitive advantage or disadvantage, and what the likely revenue stream might be in terms of taxes. Thank you.
I would say that our, our approach is slightly different than the other towns. We have tended to allow more areas for possible cultivation with more limits on the design standards and the size of the building and requiring the special permit. So in terms of areas where cultivation can happen, we're allowing more, but with controls to try and protect the neighborhood. There are no limits on the size of growing buildings in commercial and industrial, in industrial areas. We don't have a whole lot of those. The main tax benefits to towns will come through retailing. That setback amendment that you very nicely just approved would allow a lot of our existing commercial, or up to three buildings in the commercial area to be converted or rebuilt. I think it's, we've tried to provide good opportunity with good protection for the character of the town. I don't know if that answers your question.
Thank you, Judy. Paul?
Yeah, quick question. First, does the planning board foresee downstream where the growers, cultivators, will also become retail establishments in some way, shape, or form?
No. Each of these subroutines, subportions of the law, bylaws, are separate. You can't be both a grower and a seller. And there are other people, but everybody has to stand on their own.
I'd like to modify that slightly. You can be both a grower and a seller, but you would have to do it in the appropriate districts.
Okay.
As you would with any business.
Okay. And the appropriate district for retail at this point is going to be where? Well, just say it out. Don't, just where?
Commercial, industrial, and industrial.
Well. Route 5.
Route 5.
Sugarloaf Shops, those, okay.
The other thing that's possible, there's something called a craft cooperative that's allowed, so it can work the way, the example we tend to use is Cabot Creamery, where growers are in a cooperative and they have one large manufacturer processor who then sells to retailers. So that would be an opportunity for small farmers or smaller enterprises to pool in a cooperative and join forces with some manufacturer, which may or may not be in Whately, that would then have distribution as well.
Okay, thank you.
On the tax revenue, would the growers be paying the tax or would the retailers be paying the tax? Okay, so if we don't have a retail shop in town, but we are growing it, the only beneficial person will be the grower. The town will not realize any income from the grower.
The town can impose what's called a community impact fee to recover. The town can impose what's called a community impact fee to recover additional expenses for security or maintenance or other expenses incurred by the town. And it would have to be assessed based on an estimate of those expenses. But there's no provision at the moment for wholesale taxes, although it's my understanding that Montague is suggesting some, I don't see how it's possible in the law, but if it is possible, we'd certainly try to do that.
Yeah. You know, we could be a major grower here, but not realizing any benefit of the marijuana law.
Yeah, well, we would obviously have some property tax benefits from the property increase assessments, but, yeah, no, I understand, it's just.
I mean, I'm all in favor of the getting marijuana legalized and everything else, and becoming a revenue stream like the lottery has and other things have. But who's going to be on, you know, the first guy there is going to be the one who's going to reap the benefit.
Well, I think for that you need to, you need to talk to your state representative about that, because that's the state law. The state really, there's only a narrow number of things that they allow the towns to tax. So it's because of the state law. I mean, if there was a way we could tax the growers, I think this board would tax the growers, too. We're very much into being able to get those local revenue streams that the state government can't take away, but right now, the state government owns that.
Is the state?
I don't know if they're taxing it, but they're certainly not letting us tax that. But the parts that they will let us tax, we are taxing.
Okay. Are they going to regulate the amount of growers and the amount of retailers, the state, by licensing, or is it up to the towns?
There are licensing requirements by, I think it's by town, right, at this point.
Okay. Well, my suggestion would be that if we're going to allow the growers, we better have a retail establishment in town also. Other discussion or questions?
Susan Barron, I just have a procedural question. If items 41 and 42 are not passed, I see that on 43, the planning board recommends that it be adopted. If 41 and 42 are passed, will we still be voting on 43, whether we want a moratorium?
No, we would dismiss that article.
Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? I would remind you, you are voting on Article 41 as amended, include the 20-foot setback. All those, this is going to require two-thirds. I would like a count on this gentleman. Those in favor? Thank you. 42. Those opposed? Seventy-four to one. Passed.
All right. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws 171-8, Table of Use Regulations, by revising the terms for the medical marijuana-related uses and adding provisions for recreational marijuana-related uses as shown in Appendix B to this warrant and summarized below. And basically, that was the table of uses that we've shown up there.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? This requires two-thirds also. Please count, those in favor. Thank you. Opposed? Seventy-six to nothing. I would entertain a motion to dismiss Article 43.
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town move vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws 171-8, Table of Use Reg, I'm sorry, I did that one. Oh, is that? I'm sorry, I did that one. By revising provisions for agricultural use and adding provisions for farmer-brewer uses as shown in Appendix D to this warrant and summarized below.
Second.
Okay, farmer breweries are, what?
Sorry, another amendment. I move that the proposed changes to Section 171-8, Table of Use, be amended to change the designation for farmer brewery tasting room with pouring permit from N to SP.
Again, for everyone's benefit, timing prevented final action by the planning board on this article, so they are asking you to amend what was submitted several weeks ago to reflect their current thinking, and they're changing a use table from not being allowed to allowable by special permit for a certain class of brewery.
Right.
On the amendment, any issues, questions?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I have some comments. I guess I do not support this amendment because I don't.
Microphone, please.
I don't support this amendment by allowing pouring permit to be in agriculture residential area two by special permit. Other types of uses like, this would be similar to a bar or restaurant, are not allowed in agricultural two, not at all, not even by special permit. And I don't think this is similar to a bar to have it in agriculture residential area. This would mean it would be 400 feet back from the edge of the road or property line in a residential area. There would be buildings constructed probably there, a driveway through there, all this on prime agricultural land. Currently, like I say, this type of activity is not allowed in AR2, for other things. I don't see the reason for even a special permit to be considered here. AR2 land or AR1 agricultural land is in high demand today. The farmers are competing for land from other towns to use it in this town, to farm it, whereas there is commercial land available that is sitting idle. It's on the market, been on the market for sale for years, it's not selling. And some of this commercial land has enough space to grow hops or whatever it is to have a permit to be a farm brewery and a pouring room. There is space for that in commercial areas in town, and I don't see the need that we should sacrifice our agricultural and residential properties for that type of use.
Thank you, Fred. Would anyone care to offer a counter comment?
Yes. Farmer breweries are allowed by the state, and they've got very broad rules that they don't have to follow, very many rules at all. It's a political construct, basically, and you wouldn't have a farmer brewery in a commercial zone anyway, because they're made, supposed to be run by farmers.
Well, that's allowed in your table of uses here by special permit, and I guess my concern is not so much the farm brewery, it's the pouring permit where you're going to allow somebody to come there and drink however, all day, however long they want, in an agriculture residential area, when there are other places in town that that kind of use is allowed today, and it's more readily available, more accessible to people if they want to do that. I just don't think that that is the place to do it in a residential area. Yes, you can grow it there, and you can have a tasting room like we have today, but not to open it up for a bar, for people to come in and just sit there and drink all day. I think that's not.
Nicholas.
Nicholas Jones, Chestnut Plain Road. I'm on the planning board as well. I wonder whether we should perhaps just do the little presentation about farmer breweries in the midst of this discussion, because there's several different categories that we're proposing for the Table of Use, and I think, in fact, the difference between a farmer brewery tasting room and one with a pouring permit is not that significant. And so if we're thinking that the farmer breweries themselves are inappropriate in AR2, maybe we want to, it might affect the entire bylaw, if that's really what Fred is saying. But I also want to make a point, which is that the farmer brewery is, actually has nothing to do with farming. It's a state license, and it has to do with the quantity of beer produced. Most, basically, all the microbreweries around here have farmer brewery licenses, and most of them are in mill buildings or in town. I think the only local brewery that has moved beyond farmer brewery size is BBC. So don't be confused that it's a farm activity. The one we have in town does have a farm component, but they don't have to, that's not required.
Are there other issues or questions regarding this amendment? Robert?
I'm Bob Smith from Long Plain Road. I'd like to disagree with Fred. I believe that it's important to allow the change to special permit for a couple of reasons. Number one, with a special permit, the zoning board of appeals can control the hours of operation, because one would have to apply for a special permit in order to exist. And two, I believe that such an operation will allow people who own land and own farms to diversify what they do with their land and perhaps keep those farms farms. We keep talking about, you know, farms and farmland and how precious it is. Allowing someone who owns farmland in AR2 to get this sort of permit and allow this operation, I think, can preserve farmland in the town, and therefore, I would urge you to vote for the amendment.
Mr. Moderator, may I?
Sure.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with my colleague here. To equate a pouring license with a bar where you can sit all day and drink your day away, in my opinion, is a bit of a stretch. If you think about the current, the current company that does offer tasting room opportunities in waitley, you don't see anyone even asking to sit there. It's a tasting room, it's taking advantage of people who want to enjoy the rural agricultural flavor that this town is known for. It is going to enhance the lifetime experience of people in and out of this town that want to enjoy the rural landscape and continues to give the farmers the opportunity to diversify their revenue stream so they can stay in business. So I think this friendly amendment by the planning board enhances the agricultural community that we're known for rather than detracts from it.
Thank you.
And I respectfully disagree with Fred as well.
I think we've probably discussed this enough for this evening.
Yeah, we've killed it.
All those in favor of amending the use table? And those opposed? The ayes have it. We will now proceed to discuss the main motion as amended.
Okay, so as Nicholas has already pointed out, farmer breweries are businesses. Waitley currently has minimal control over the location because the state laws are so broad. Proposed changes are designed to encourage farmer breweries while providing town oversight and neighborhood input. Next one? So this is the table of use. Right now, we're showing farmer breweries in AR1, farmer breweries tasting room, and farmer brewery tasting room with permit not allowed in AR1, allowed with special permit in AR2, as well as commercial, industrial, and industrial. The pouring permit means that the tasting permit, basically, tasting room allows the proprietor to give you a taste of whatever beer you would like to try, and then you purchase it so that you can take it home with you. The farmer brewery tasting room allows him to charge a buck or something for the glass of beer rather than having it gratis, so you could have a second glass if you wanted to make sure that it still tasted good. And that's it. Oh. Oh, yeah, we're going to cover this, too. The other proposed change would tighten the definition of greenhouses and nurseries in the table of use to clarify that sales must be floral and nursery products only, which is what most of our existing greenhouses are. And by taking out horticultural, which is a pretty broad designation, and keep it to floricultural or nursery products on five acres or more, takes, basically gives the greenhouses the right to do what they're doing now, and it takes the ambiguity out of it so that somebody couldn't say that they're growing something really off the wall and get a permit for a farm brewery, for instance, or retail sales.
I should point out that without this amendment to the table of use, it's not clear that the special permit requirements that we've just recommended for the farmer breweries would be effective, because it's this horticultural wording for the greenhouse that was, what was used to allow the existing farmer brewery to operate in town. We're very fortunate that that farmer brewery is small, discreet, has limited hours of operation, fits in nicely in the community, but we can't guarantee that going forward. So this is plugging a loophole.
Discussion?
Yeah, I have just one question. I want to make sure that I got it straight. Whether we're talking about pouring or tasting, we're talking about something that is made at this place. I can't walk in here and ask for Bud Light.
No.
Correct?
That's correct.
Thank God. So we're not a bar, we're not talking about me taking a bunch of my friends over and having whatever the hell they want over at this person's establishment. We're talking about pouring or tasting what is being grown, well, not necessarily grown, but produced, brewed on the premises.
Other questions or discussion? So we will now proceed to vote on the amended main motion. This will require two-thirds, so tell us, I will need a count. All those in favor, please signify.
Wait till next meeting.
Yeah, wait till the next meeting.
You're right. Those opposed? Apparently 98 to nothing.
Mr. Moderator, this is the last you're going to hear from me. I move the town vote to amend the town's zoning bylaws 171-37, terms defined by adding definitions for the farmer brewery uses as shown in Appendix E to this warrant and summarized below. So it adds the definition of the farmer brewery into the Appendix E. Basically, it's just the last place we need to go.
Any discussion? Yes. Scott?
Scott Jackson, Haydenville Road. Just want to clarify that this change in language would not affect the ability to produce food. food in greenhouses?
Also, that was the previous vote.
We're on to the page of definitions of what a farm brewery is.
Is that kind of a horticultural?
No, that was tied up in the last vote.
Right. They left their slides on, they should have shut it off. Any other questions? Actually, any real questions? Just kidding. This will require two-thirds, so we'll need to count also all those in favor. 41? 43. Those opposed? 84 to nothing.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn without date.
Without date.
I second that.
Moved and seconded that we adjourn CNA Day. All those in favor?
Yeah.
I won't ask. Thank you all very much.
Well done, Mr. Moderator.